All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 11th, 2015. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, could you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry. Chair Larkin?
Here.
Member Landweir?
Here.
Member Lewis?
Here.
Member Palmer?
Here.
Member Nichols?
Here.
Detective Kelly?
Here.
Thanks, Don. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up would be the agenda approval, adjustments and announcements and correspondence. The first would be the approval of agenda. Could I have a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. As far as announcements, August 18th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, school board work session here in the community room. August 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting, again here in the community room. September 8th, Tuesday is the first day for students. September 8th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. September 15th, Tuesday, 5:30, school board work session here in the community room. September 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, another regular school board meeting, again here in the community room. And as far as correspondence, is there any correspondence tonight?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to speak tonight? Anybody? Bigger crowd than usual, got to make sure, so, okay. Next up is a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the July 21st meeting, school board meeting, personnel report, and a treasures report for June of 2015. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
Here, moved.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, discussions, reports, and information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly?
Chair Larkin, I do not have any activity to report on this time. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah? The only thing I have tonight is I attended, we met West Metro Educational Partnership Executive Committee meeting, and they do have new offices now in Golden Valley because both the fair schools have been conveyed to Minneapolis and Robinsdale. So, they do have a pretty large space in Golden Valley on Highway 55, open, pretty large, open area for training. So, the whole idea is to create training space and coaching space so that they can bring in staff from the member districts and help them learn more about how to be more effective with diversity and equity issues and to help close the achievement gap. So, that's in the works, and then tomorrow night we have a board meeting to consider approving a new director, executive director, Kimberly Dreyer. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Grant?
Besides me, meeting with a few members and Kathy Kelly talking, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Laura?
Okay, I actually do have something to report. Last Wednesday, we had our board meeting on Wednesday, I attended the 916, Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting. That is our intermediate school district, and they provide, it's a collaboration between various school districts, and we collaborate to provide, they provide more of the special education and experience for our children that require a little bit more than can be done economically and effectively within the district. Just going over that, just in case anybody's not familiar with it. Now, we had a couple of things. I had an update on the first full year over at Carner Blue and the successes that they've had. And they started out with 50 students that were already in other programs that were funneled into Carner Blue because they, instead of having various sites, they put them all in that one location. At the end of the year, they'd actually served 155 students. And the, and the safety aspect has been absolutely tremendous because as, even as the students were, you know, the buildings were getting more, more filled up, the incidences were actually well below the year before when they were only having 50 students in these programs. So, I thought that was just amazing, and if anybody hasn't had a chance to go up there and see Carner Blue, you can actually check quite a bit out on the website, and that is a school that is designed specifically for students with autism and other types of difficulties like that. It's a special environment that's been created so that they can actually learn instead of being hampered by a lot of distractions that would happen in maybe a normal school period. We also got an update on the Lake Elmo location, and they want to, it's a slightly different type of location, there's not quite as much nature around Lake Elmo, so they don't have, they don't have the nature theme like Carner Blue does, so they've decided that they're going to go on an arts kind of a theme and, and do a lot more art activities within their programs. And, and the name, I guess, is going to be called Pankala, and that, I guess, means in Greek, it's supposed to mean complete beauty. So, it'd be interesting to see what happens with that soon. We're finalizing some things, and hopefully we can get that started and get that opened up soon and start serving the students over on that side of the district. So, I think that's pretty much it, and the rest is just normal business, so, you know, school board policies and things like that. Okay? That's it for me.
Thank you. As far as myself, I also had an opportunity to meet with a couple of different board members, the superintendent, and I also attended the MSBA Summer Seminar, which was the crucial conversations, and just a couple points of note, the initial guest speaker, Dr. John Draper, talked about crucial conversations about public schools, and what I took away from that more than anything else is that in this day and age with all the scrutiny and the things that are, that people are talking about, that, you know, your theme needs to be that you promote your positive, the things that you're doing well in your district, you work to strengthen your weaknesses, but you certainly promote the positive, which I think, especially over the course of the past couple, three years, I think that that's a direction that we're headed. So, it felt good to have someone, you know, reinforce that that was a direction that we were going. Some of the state, from the state presented on demographics of the state of Minnesota. One of the breakouts I went to was superintendent's evaluation and the link with strategic goals. I was surprised when they asked, they polled the room, how many people were actually doing evaluations for their superintendents annually. There was, I guess I just figured everybody was, and according to MSBA, if you are, again, you're ahead of the curve on doing that. So, some interesting conversations there. And then they wrapped up with social media and talking about, it was called Put Social Media in Its Place. And again, the thing I walk away from every time I go to one of those social media seminars is I don't, I realize how far behind I am, the youth of today, in what they're doing and where they're at, so. But overall, it was a, it was a really good seminar, and that is my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair members, I have a little bit longer, so please bear with me. I attended a joint meeting with the frilly administrators to discuss integration rules, integration plans, and transportation issues between our two districts, and that was very productive. Director Hongren was also there. We had the school district's election clerk, which is Don Hoyam, and I met with representatives from Anoka County and the state, and we talked about their elections office regarding the processes and the procedures we needed to fill a school board vacancy, and there'll be more on this later in the meeting. So, we are contracting with the county, so we're following their procedures and are working in collaboration with them. I had a delightful evening, I attended the Columbia Heights Fine Arts Foundation's rendition of the play 12 Angry Jurors. And it was, it was great to see both, we had a Columbia Heights alumni, Madeline Livingston, who was in it, and a former school board member, Keith Roberts. And they did the whole play on the stage, including the audience and the cast members, so it was very intimate. And the proceeds for that delightful evening really go to student scholarships and arts in the district, and so I wanted to thank them for a wonderful evening, but thank them for the support that they give our students and arts in the community. The negotiations team continues to meet regarding local 710 contract, and then I attended the Rotary Golf Dinner and Silent Auction to Benefit the Strive program that we have in the district. Director Stunkels and Mahan were there, and Principal Oberleski was there. We didn't participate in the golf tournament per se, but we went to the dinner where one of our very own alumni spoke as the keynote. Quentin Lee spoke as a Strive student, and he talked about what it was like to receive the scholarship and then the impact that the Strive program has had on his future plans. Did a wonderful job. The design team has been very active, and we'll hear more about that this evening as well. And so, we met to put together a summary for you all that you'll hear about tonight, and members are here. I also attended the MSBA Summer Leadership Conference with Chair Larkin, and then the next two days, Minnesota Department of Education puts on a superintendent back-to-school conference, so participated in that as well, and Principal Jeff Sosick and Assessments Coordinator Adam Nelson, Adam is with us tonight, attended that two-day conference with, with me. I attended a school board, a school board chair meeting with Chair Larkin and Vice Chair Landweir, and I have been in multiple communications and meetings with some or most of the board members, and so I want to thank you for the time you spent with me, and if you want to spend more with me, you know where I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along. First up tonight is curriculum cycle and update. The board will be presented with information on current implementation of the seven-year curriculum review cycle. This update reflects the most recent information from the state regarding revisions of standards in key content areas. The curriculum review cycle is attached, and Xena and Tara, welcome.
Chair Larkin. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, I'm here this evening with Curriculum Coordinator Tara Tuckrell to present an update on our curriculum review cycle. So, as always, our mission is to create worlds of opportunities for every learner, and this evening, this update is focusing on the core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation. So, our curriculum cycle is based upon the following two factors. One is Minnesota State Statute 120B dot 11, and then also our strategic direction A of our strategic plan.
We have a seven-year curriculum cycle, and this is laid out above on the screen, but also the first year what we do is we really look at the data. We look at the standards that we have, the Minnesota State standards, and the data that we're showing, how our students are doing with it, and we determine our next steps from there. So, the next steps would be curriculum writing for year two. So, in year two, we really start digging into it, what are some of the publishers having for curriculum, what is some writing that we can do as staff for curriculum to meet our students' needs. In year three, we're moving into professional development for our teachers. So, after the curriculum is written, we're looking at how can we support our teachers and staff with the curriculum we have? And then years four through seven are really important, it's a data collection part of it. How are we doing to continue to implement with fidelity? How are we supporting our teachers with professional development and collecting assessment from there? So, looking at the curriculum cycle for this year, for 2015, 2016, we have a couple areas we're really looking into, and the first one is math, and we're going to be focusing in on K-5 math. Our curriculum cycle usually has K-12, but we'll be focusing in on K-5 because we've done 612 out of cycle for different reasons in terms of financial and data that showed. The other area that we're really going to focus in on this year is on the arts. We have new national art standards, so we started working on that last year, and we're going to continue to work on visual arts, media arts, music, so all the different areas, supporting our teachers with curriculum writing and professional development. So, a couple things about a curriculum cycle, the first part is Atlas. We use Atlas as the online software, and this is an area that we can work on writing our curriculum and creating a scope and sequence. It's also a place online that we let public see the different areas that we're working on throughout the year, different assessments we're using with our students. The second one is the K-12 curriculum phases. We try to look at our curriculum in terms of a K-12, all of it together, but there are times in which for financial, purchasing curriculum, or for data, that we might take it out of cycle, like this year for the K-5 math. New courses, so another, we try to follow the curriculum cycle, but there are times in which we need to add in new courses, so we'll follow the school board procedures to add new courses in, and as the courses are added, then they start joining in with the curriculum cycle. Special education English learners, we've now incorporated within the cycle, so they will be, the needs of our students are looked at within each of the content areas. Our social-emotional learning includes responsive classroom and developmental designs, bully prevention, advisory, and so in those areas, we're looking at them annually to ensure that we're meeting our students' needs. College and career readiness is our focus in all areas in our curriculum, but we're continuously looking into it annually to ensure that we're meeting what our benchmarks are for college and career, but we've also separated Avid and Ramp Up because there's a lot more curriculum writing and data collection for those two. Technology integration is incorporated within the entire cycle, so it's within each content area that we'll continue to assess technology. One area which we had talked about earlier today was MDE standards follow a different cycle. So, sometimes they'll say math is coming out next year, and then we found out it's not coming out till 2020. So, our curriculum cycle might change dependent upon the MDE standards. We have agreed to put our board-approved curriculum cycle online so that the public are able to see and be able to be a part of that as well. And our curriculum adoption cycle really includes everybody in the community. We try to include school board, we include administration and teachers in the community. And the last point was just about the reading and math and science are priority, so if we have to take them out of cycle, we will do so, but we'll try to follow the seven-year cycle that we've approved. Anything wanted on?
I'll just add a note, and I think we'll present on this later on in the school year, that we are working with early childhood on a grade, on an age three to grade three task force, and so not only are we looking at standards K-12, but we're aligning with pre-K to kindergarten to first and second, so just one additional note.
One area in which we're doing this is on our curriculum mapping. So, on Atlas, you can connect through our website and see Atlas, all of our teachers' scope and sequences are on there, and our goal is to really look at pre-K to 12 at the horizontal alignment, that we have similar things happening between classrooms, between schools at a grade level, but also the vertical alignment. So, students are moving from pre-K to kindergarten, from fourth grade to fifth to sixth, to ensure that we have that vertical alignment in terms of skills and standards as well.
So, as Tara mentioned earlier, we use a process that involves the school board for developing curriculum. So, we start with the needs of our students and in conversation with our teachers. That information goes to our leadership teams, principals, teaching and learning, and then it moves to an administrative team. We confer with the community through our World's Best Workforce Leadership Team and make sure we're getting input from all areas, and then it goes to the superintendent and ultimately for approval by the school board. So, there's our process. So, this is a complex snapshot of our standards, both what we, Tara mentioned this a little bit earlier, so at some, sometimes we're working on the current rendition or edition of the standards, and then MDE comes out with new standards or changes the scope and sequence or the timeline for implementing the standards. So, here you can see, sometimes we're working on standards, for example, in math that came out in 2007, and we thought they might be coming out with new standards, but that's been now pushed back to the school year 2020 to 2021. So, you can see kind of how we're working. Two areas to highlight that are upcoming, well, Tara mentioned that the, the arts standards are new, and so that's what we're working on currently, and then upcoming, very soon, are the science, they're called next-generation science standards. So, our teachers are well aware that that's coming on board, and we'll be gearing up for that through our curriculum cycle.
We just wanted to give a quick update on the math curriculum cycle, since that is really in full gear this year. We started it last year by looking at data with our teachers and administration, really breaking down the data to see where we're at. And what we noticed was we've had everyday mathematics since over 10 years, I think since before I've been here, so it's been longer.
1998.
Okay. And what we've noticed is that our data isn't showing the growth that we want for our students, as well as we're really putting in a lot more supplementing into everyday math, so it doesn't look like everyday math anymore, which is a spiral curriculum. So, we started digging into that data and realized we wanted to look and see what else is out there. So, we invited some publishers out and met with teaching and learning, and we looked and reviewed about seven or eight of them, and we've narrowed it down to three after talking to teachers and administration about what the needs are and what we really want to see in a curriculum. So, our next steps are this August, we're going to be meeting with teachers and with administration and some community members that have shown interest, and we're going to be bringing the publishers out to share the different programs that are out there for math, to see if any of them really fit our needs here. From there, we're hoping to find a program that we can pilot, and we'll pilot this fall a program, we'll try some different units, the different grade levels in schools, to see if it really is meeting the needs that we want for our students and our teachers and our families. And then our next steps would be that in January, we'd be able to propose to the school board a purchase for the following school year for a math curriculum, if that's what we decide. So, we're excited about this. We've had a lot of different community input through World's Best Workforce and through our K-5 math leadership teams, and so they're excited about this upcoming change.
So, with that, if you have any questions for us?
Do you have questions?
So, the curriculum, are you foresee, is it the same across all the elementaries? So, we have, so no matter which elementary the students come from, they're ready for Columbia Academy when they hit that?
That's correct. So, not only do, from the Office of Teaching and Learning, do we, you know, implement curriculum across the K-5 schools, our literacy leadership teams and our math leadership teams from across the schools work together on a regular basis to ensure that they're all on the same page and they're collaborating.
Great. Thank you.
And then we'll also hopefully include Columbia Academy in on this decision, so they can see the next step as well, so they can see that it's meeting the needs for the students coming in.
That makes sense.
Correct.
You say you met with, for the world's best workforce with the community and stuff, how are parents, how many parents were involved with that? Just like, was it like different groups, and how many were, like, how were they selected? I guess it was a kind of an understanding I wanted to know.
So, the Office of Teaching and Learning last year put out invitations for, to community members to come and meet on a regular basis for the World's Best Workforce Leadership Team. There must have been, I want to say, I don't have the list in front of me, but eight to 10 people were present at that meeting, at the meeting where we shared the curriculum update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the start of the school year activities, and Xena?
I'll stay here, yes. Okay, so Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board, I will continue with our back-to-school activities for this fall. Again, our mission is to create worlds of opportunities for every learner, and this update will focus on community, excellence, collaboration, and respect of our core values. So, here's a snapshot of what is up and coming for kind of the schedule for back-to, back-to-school week, before the students even arrive, we will be, and I'll go through each of these, we'll be welcoming our new teachers and our new staff for three days, and then we have a combination of district in-service, building pre-service, and our convocation, which is a district in-service day as well. So, all of the work that we're doing, not only before school starts to work with our staff, but also throughout the school year, is always guided by our college pathways, our college and career readiness pathways and benchmarks, along with our life skills. So, this is really a guiding document for us as we work with staff to prepare students and support our students. So, we'll start with Scaling the Heights, which is our three-day new teacher and new staff induction. So, you can see the first day, which is Monday, August 24th, is really about welcoming our new staff to the district and also getting to know our community. So, there's a tour of the community, and they meet various community members, the Columbia Heights community opens their arms and welcomes, welcomes our new staff, and we will be having lunch at the Public Safety Building. Then the, the next day is really a focus on our district programs, so specific curriculum areas, student services, finances, the finance department, benefits, and all of the technology pieces that they need. And that day lunch is sponsored by the Local 710 Teachers Union. Then the third day, we have breakfast sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and then that day, for much of the day, the new teachers are working with their mentors on a, on a set curriculum that they go through to really support and provide that welcoming environment to this, to the new teachers and the new staff. Then we move to three days of district in-service, August 27th, August 31st, and September 1st. So, really, August 27th is the first day that we have all licensed staff back, and so they'll be, again, setting the tone, resetting the tone, reinvigorating everyone with college and career readiness, life skills, and closing the achievement gap, working under the World's Best Workforce plans. That day will also include some smaller, some smaller learning sessions for taking that vision and putting it into action. So, what are some of those action steps? What are the strategies that we're going to be using in, in class? The 31st, district-wide, will be a focus on math, pre-K to 12. There'll also be specific training sessions for, from student services in the areas of English learners and students with special needs. Then on September 1st, we move our focus on literacy, pre-K 12, and this also includes content-specific areas around college and career readiness, so specific content areas such as social studies and science and career and tech ed will have an opportunity to combine how are we looking at college and career readiness in that specific content area. Then we have in there, on September 2nd, our convocation, and this is always a fun day to welcome back all district staff, licensed or not. In the High School Performing Arts Center is where we start off our day, and then we have, we enjoy a lunch across the street at Kodiak Park, and in the afternoon, there's meetings and different, different training sessions such as new teacher evaluation and other things like that. I also wanted to highlight that we'll be having some open houses coming up as well, so that's on the list. September 2 for Columbia Academy, the other schools are on Thursday, September 3rd. And then I wanted to give you a personal invitation to the school board to join us, particularly starting with Monday, August 24th, in the morning, we'll meet here in the community room, to introduce yourselves to our new teachers and our new staff. Also, that same day, I'd like to invite you to the lunch that we're having at the Public Safety Building. And then on the 25th, we'll be having the Chamber of Commerce will be sponsoring breakfast again here in the community room. And then again, on Wednesday, September 2nd, for the convocation for all district staff, and of course, the lunch across at Kodiak Park. So, with that, if you have any questions for me?
School starting.
Can't believe it.
It is, it is. Here it comes.
Questions or comments from any of the members? Okay, thank you, Xena.
Thanks.
Next up will be long-term facilities maintenance revenue. The board will be presented with information on long, long-term facilities maintenance. The board will be presented with information on long, long-term facilities maintenance. Oh, and Bill will be presenting, sorry Bill.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. There is a little bit of good news that came out of the last legislative session. It doesn't help us right away, but it does help us in the future with our facilities and our maintenance of our facilities. And I want to just touch on a couple of the details of it this evening because then we have some responsibilities to the MDE with this new revenue. Okay, long-term facilities maintenance revenue, they always put a long handle on whatever these new programs they're putting together. But allowed uses are to prevent further erosion of facilities, increase accessibility of school facilities. And of course, it includes our health and safety program as it is now. Things that we cannot use this new revenue for is to build new facilities. We can't use it for any type of a lease purchase program or energy efficiency projects or violence prevention or security of our buildings. They still have to stay in the same areas we have them now. So there's nothing we can transfer over and use this new money for, is directly for maintenance. Actually, Tom and I are very, very happy about that. Right now, our current, our current funding, when we look at deferred types of projects, our health and safety, we spend approximately half a million dollars a year of different health and safety projects that are mandated from the state of Minnesota for us to carry out. And then we do have deferred maintenance, that we get a little over 200,000 on a yearly basis, which we've been using for some of our, our projects. And this has helped for maintenance. So when we talk about the same types of things that we talked about for our, our new capital levy last fall, this is kind of an add-on to that. And that's where we use it to help maintain our buildings. So we go into the new, the new piece, for fiscal 2016, which is what we just started, you'll see that we get about 716,000 between our deferred and our health and safety. So for 2017, we're going to receive $193 per pupil unit. So you can see that actually our total funding actually drops a tiny bit from where we are right this minute. But that's only for one year. As it goes forward, it, it moves up to 292 per pupil unit and then to 380. Where it'll level off if nothing, if no changes are made to the law at that time. So you can see that we'll get about $300,000 in 18 and then again in 19, another 300,000 that we totally earmark to our buildings in maintenance. So we're very, very glad about that. And another thing to note out, this really doesn't limit any of our indoor air quality, any of our fire safety or asbestos. If we need these projects and we're up against that, that limit, we still can do those projects if need be. And any, just like we do now, if we have a large project, like we did when we did our pool, our indoor air quality project with our pool, and we had a large expenditure of over 100,000, we can bond for that and spread those payments out. So then I'll, not all hit at one time. So what we have to do for MDE now though, is we have to approve a 10-year facility maintenance plan. So what we're doing is we're using our current 10-year facility plan to put these numbers together. So the MDE has an idea where we think we'll spend these dollars and which category. Now I've, I've attached the, the budget that we need to present to MDE in your packet. And you can see how we, we broke that out. So we still keep, we're keeping health and safety separate. You can see that at the top of your spreadsheet. And the, the bottom then is the new categories. And of course, this plan needs to be updated on a yearly basis. So we'll be bringing this, and if you remember our health and safety project, we had to bring this to, to the board every year and, but we only showed you three years at a time. But now we'll be showing you 10. So of course, this will modify when we look at the, you know, eighth, ninth, 10th year. Thing has changed as, as maintenance, you know, issues arise. So anyway, just to give you an idea of what's going on and you can see the budget there. And I'll be coming back at our next meeting to ask approval of that budget to be sent to MDE. So we receive our revenue. Any questions?
I was wondering if perhaps we could get, I mean, we have a lot of new board members, if we could get another tour of the facilities and some of the needs that are, that are there. That was, I believe I, I took a tour the first year I was on the board and I found that was very, very instructive.
Actually, it's a very good idea and we certainly can put that plan together to try to fit, fit that together before our board meeting some night. Yeah, great idea.
Does this affect the health and safety levy that we have from time to time?
This is all tied to levy, just like it is now. We're part of its levy, part of its aid from the state of Minnesota. That percentage, we don't have the exact numbers yet of how that's going to pan out. We'll see those numbers better in September. But for the year we're in, of course, it's not going to change. And for 17, it's not going to change because of the totals aren't, aren't any different. So as we go forward though into 18 and 19, depending where the aid and the levy come together, we might see a small increase in our levy, but I don't expect very much from, when we look at the, our tax base and so forth. But as I get those numbers firmed up, I'll certainly share those with you.
So it's not where the state would give us more and we would have to levy less from our own community?
Well, that's always the hope that would happen, just like it did here a couple of years ago, where we really had a large shift where we, our aid went way up. But at this point, this is a brand-new program. I'm not sure how they're gonna, until they kind of see what the total costs are, I think across the state of Minnesota, you know, it always tends to get adjusted. But like I say, we're two years away from any, any change in our levy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I, I really want to comment that this is a welcome addition for smaller school districts with aging buildings. In the past, there's been about 25 larger districts that have been able to have access to additional funds and we have not. And that has put the other districts at a disadvantage. I'd like to thank the legislature for taking into account that we do have aging buildings, even though we don't have gargantuan square footage like Anoka. And we will, we do have needs and it's nice to know that the legislature is supporting us in this, in this area. So thank you.
Anybody else? This is coming back at the next regular school board meeting.
Yeah, the, the next school board meeting, I'll ask you to approve the budget that I put in your packet to be sent off to MDE.
Thanks, Bill. Next up is the Castle Heights Community Conversation Update. The board will be presented with an update on the Castle Heights Community Conversations. The presenter will be Superintendent Kelly, Bill Holmgren, Kristin Stunkel, Mariah, is it Lovison, Mariah? Okay, from the Minnesota State Office of Collaboration. Welcome, Mariah.
Thank you, may I start? I, I want to welcome Mariah for sure to the front, but I would also like to acknowledge the design team that is with us this evening. Mariah was our facilitator, but State Representative Carolyn Lane is here, Carolyn, is in the front seat as well as Marcia Stroick, sitting beside her. Mary Loes Granlund is next to her. Kristin Stunkel was part of that team and she's at the, the end of the row. Chair Larkin was also on the team as, as was I, but there was also some design support. Bill Holmgren pinch-hit a little bit on finances and gave us some good advice. And Michelle DeWitt was not able this summer to participate, but was an initial member. And then Nicole Hollaby gave us some advice on what to do in student services. And I would like to thank the community at large for coming forward for the, for the conversation and pie. I, I think that the board received the summary packet in the update and it's in Board Book. But I look forward to the presentation tonight for all of you. It was a fun experience for us to go through and some of you were there. So I pass the baton to Mariah, actually.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. So I'm the, my role is as the facilitator in this process. So all of these folks around me who have just been named, they were the ones doing the work, but they asked me to be here this evening just to give a summary of the process that we were all involved in and what's come out of it. So you have a summary in your packet, I believe. So this is sort of a summary of the summary. But as you may have heard, Representative Lane and Superintendent Kathy Kelly saw a need for a conversation around this topic and they asked me to come on board and help with the organizing and facilitating of the process. And the first thing that I suggested was that a representative group of stakeholders who were interested in the topic come together to work on planning the process. And I'll probably use the phrase "design team", which just means a planning group, it's just a phrase that I use. So these folks got together and helped determine what the purpose of the community conversation would be and how it would work. And the reason for doing so is that when you get a kind of a representative group of stakeholders involved, they're much more likely to be able to design a process that will meet the needs of those involved. And so the, the members of that team are the ones that Kathy introduced this evening. And they represented the district, administration, the board, the community at large, the community members who are involved in the creation of the Castle Heights Playground. And these were the meeting objectives that they defined as we worked together for the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago. And they put in a lot of effort to creating these objectives. It's, it's a key part of an effort like this is to be really clear upfront about what those objectives are so that we make sure that we organize a process that will help meet them. So the objectives that they came up with were to learn about the history of and honor the spirit of the community effort that created the Castle Heights Playground, to enable the community to share their experiences of that effort, the playground and the decision to remove it, and to assist the school district and the broader community in recapturing the spirit of the community effort that created the playground and developing recommendations for future use of the Castle Heights site. Likewise, the, the team of planners here put a lot of thought into what the conversation should be, what questions should we ask so that we would create a conversation that would be meaningful and would be useful to the district and the community moving forward on this topic? And so we asked three questions and I, in your summary, there's a longer summary of what was said by the folks who participated. And the highlights are here, sort of the most commonly stated answers to these questions are here. So what has the playground or the community effort to build it meant to you personally? Appeals to all ages, including big and little kids and adults. Appreciation of and pride in accessibility of playground to people with disabilities. Concerns about safety, fond memories that the building of the playground was a labor of love. A real sense of pride in the community for creating the playground and how unique, creative and special the playground was. So those are some of the most stated answers to that question. And then we went around the room again and we asked folks to comment on what concerns do you have regarding the playground? That could have been concerns about the current Castle Heights Playground, the new playground that was planned, the decision-making process for removing it or other related topics. And those comments really centered around two topics. One was the need for more inclusive conversation and the other was safety concerns about the playground. And our third and final question was about how could the community, meaning both the district and the broader community, recapture the spirit of that community effort that created the playground, including generating specific ideas about how to utilize the site? So it was both about how do we recapture that energy that led the community to come together and fundraise and create such a unique part of the community and specifically what could be done with the Castle Heights site? So the most, and this was where we spent probably the, the greatest amount of the time that evening. And the most frequently stated responses there were that it be accessible to kids and adults with disabilities, that it include kids' perspectives in the design, that it be multi-generational, that it be an opportunity to bring community together, that it have a relationship with Blooming Heights, that it have shade and natural cover, that it be a true community effort to create it and an ongoing community effort in the life cycle of the space, that it be unique and special, that there be equipment for health for older adults, things like balance, flexibility and mobility, perhaps an outdoor classroom, a performance space, our wellness playground for multiple generations. So as a facilitator, it's my role to be objective and I don't have sort of any stake or perspective on the, the topics that I work with groups on. But one thing that I want to veer from that and editorialize a little bit was to say that something that struck me on the evening of the conversation was that there was a really strong and beautiful spirit of a desire to have a collaborative effort of all working together to create something really special for the community. So there were parents there, but there were also folks who weren't directly connected to the school district who just wanted to be a part of creating something great for their community. So that was something that really struck me as a facilitator. And our group, our planning group, our design team met, was it last week, I think, to talk about where do we go from here? At the end of the night, there was sort of a feeling of, okay, great, we have a lot of ideas, we have a lot of energy. Where are we going to go from here? And so we didn't get to resolve that question yet. So the, the kind of planning team met again and agreed on some steps that they wanted to recommend to the board as potential next steps to build on this conversation. And so some of those ideas were to share the summary, which the whole design team has said was an accurate reflection of the evening, with the board, as has been done, and with other stakeholders. So using the email list of folks who were there, social media, other things, the board has, or the district has a number of communication channels. So to spread that summary around. And then to bring the topic to the board so that the board can help determine the focus or the charge of what a group who would work to move these ideas forward might do and what those parameters would be, including things like what are the financial parameters, which we all know are, are real ones, liability issues and other concerns. And so from there, what the, the design team was thinking would be to develop a team, a bridge team, that would be facilitated both by a representative or representatives from the district and from the community. So they would be co-chairs. Their work would be defined by the board's charge to the group so that the team could then work within those parameters to come up with a plan for the Castle Heights site. That it would be open to anyone who wanted to participate and to encourage diverse memberships. So one thing we heard a lot during the, the community conversation that we had was that not everyone is reflected in this room. That not all students' voices are reflected. How do we capture the voice of early childhood education students by speaking to their parents or their teachers? How do we engage the diverse communities that live within Columbia Heights so that it be really reflective so that whatever plan comes out of it is something that really meets the needs of the community? An ambitious aspirational goal here to have a first meeting take place by the end of September. That the, the group thought that one of the first things that the team would do would be to have some focus groups. That was done in the creation of Castle Heights. And the group thought it would be a good thing to do this time around too, to have focus groups with students of all ages, with parents, staff and other stakeholders. And that a likely next step might be, once the, the team has come up with some kind of a vision and has worked through those details and has some good ideas in place, that then some kind of group would come in who would be able to help with a charrette or a collaborative process of trying to get a design in place. So kind of laying out all those options, working together to figure out how those things would all really go together and what that would look like. At that point, the group would be reporting back to the board about what the process has been and what has come out of their working together. And finally, based on whatever the design or plan would be, to seek appropriate collaborative partners to fund and support the project. So during the conversation, everyone was well aware that funding is certainly one issue that needs to be addressed. But that the, the idea of the group was that they wouldn't know who the partners would be until they knew what the plan would be. And so a lot of good ideas were generated and those are included in the longer summary that you have. And a lot of sort of goodwill and the hope that the community was able to fundraise for an effort once for the Castle Heights Playground, that that could be possible again, depending on what the, the design was. That group would then work on seeking collaborative partners. So that is my summary. And if you have questions, the whole team is here. Again, I can sort of give you the process overview, but on the substantive pieces, those, the folks who have been working on this issue would be the ones who can best address that.
Yeah, well, I wanted to, I certainly want to open it up to everybody, but as far as Bill, do you have anything to add?
Well, I have, after, during that meeting, ID also came up to, we need more input from, from the community members that aren't, weren't at the meeting. So we did put up a area on our website to collect ideas that members would have. Along with that, there was a meeting with some students, with Superintendent Kathy Kelly, and we have some ideas from that. So I have, I have a couple of slides I can show you with those ideas that would be added on to what was just presented here with Mariah. So if it would take a few minutes right now, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, as I said, these are additional submitted ideas that were put into our website up through last Friday afternoon. So I'm just going to kind of read through them. And I believe there is a list of these actually in your packet also. But a pavilion with picnic tables and a memorial or display to recognize the history of Castle Heights. Shaded spot for gatherings, picnics, a skateboard park, amphitheater, replacement for the park especially with a tire swing. Outdoor seated shaded meeting space for classes from ECFE Highland High School and community clubs to meet for educational purposes. The size of the playground was good, but make sure there's good drainage, that it accommodate many heights and sizes. Is composed of materials that are durable and safe. It includes shade. Outdoor classroom, plants and flowers surrounding, some type of outdoor space to perform theater, puppetry. puppetry. Take note from Wilson Park and St. Cloud, try to keep Castle Heights theme, children need things to push their imagination. Community area with outdoor fitness equipment for adults and seniors, sound play, outdoor musical instruments for children, trees, bushes, mazes, greenery, and an outdoor classroom for, or performance area. A few shaded picnic table areas would be nice. And now, and then when, from the group that I met with Superintendent, the students were high school students, and they, they came up with outdoor theater, student-focused theater experience such as a puppet theater, or a band shell or outdoor concert space. So that, you know, definitely some similarities with what came from our meeting and then what we collected on, on our website.
Can I just ask a question, Bill?
Sure.
How long will that website be open for suggestions?
Well, at this point right now, it is, we aren't collecting anymore.
Okay.
At this, right this minute, I guess, you know, from our point of view, we have to find out what the board wants to do to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
So would it be possible for the design team to perhaps have their own website to solicit more recommendations on the community?
Well, it's just, yeah, I mean, I mean, we can do all kinds of different ideas, how to collect more information. We just have to discuss what, what you, what you're looking at doing and.
Yeah, I think kind of the, the next step is we were provided with the detailed summary in our board packets. The information came forward tonight, and then the intention is to, in the near future, have conversation at a work session to charge or task administration to set up facilitating the, and co-chair from the community and from there. And, and moving forward, I would, I'll say sky's the limit. I mean, depending on what they come back with, as far as ideas that they come back with, then it gets into, as Mariah talked about, and we had the conversations at the meeting is, you know, we need, you know, creative partners as well as, you know, funding partners, so, and that would be part of that group, that they would work to find those resources and things like that. So that's kind of moving forward. So to answer your question, I would, you know, if that's the direction they went, I mean, I don't know what kind of a, a cost would be involved with something like that, but I know that the, the conversation was that the district's ability for funding it was pretty limited, so.
Just like to see, especially that school hasn't really started yet, maybe that some, some of the students and kids could get, you know, their ideas and get a more range of students to see what they wanted, is their school at its time, you know, I mean. I would have liked that a thousand.
And that was, again, in the meeting it came up, and I think in the summary, Mariah mentioned that, too, that there's, you know, having more opportunities.
More opportunity.
So the fact that the website's not open doesn't mean it couldn't be open again for suggestions and things like that. I think they were looking for, to be able to come forward here, this is what we've got, so they put the August 7th deadline for the website, get your ideas in, knowing that, you know, we have, to steal your quote, the gift of time, you know, at this point moving forward. So it's, you know, what opportunities or ideas can people come up with, whether it be students or the website again?
I think it's just, the point I was making is just to create enthusiasm, you know, students that get enthused about this and more, you know, their parents will come with, too, you know, because that's, you know, I remember back in Castle Heights, that was a big deal when we, we were in 92 when I was a junior, and created enthusiasm, you know, and I think, you know, the students are big on that, especially what they get, so it's kind of exciting, so it's cool.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to say that the students that came forward came through, came forward voluntarily, and they said they were coming in to talk on some issues, and one of them was Castle Heights, but at the end of the meeting, they did say that they would volunteer to help contact students, inform focus groups at the high school. And I think one of the things that Mariah said so nicely is that we did talk about focus groups for the students, and Marcia was regaling also how they did it with the elementaries and the middle school and the high school. So we have a model that has happened in the past, so we, we will do more of the focus groups as well.
Any other questions for the board at this point?
We take the entire focus group, I believe.
What's that? Sure.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, board members, Kathy, Superintendent Kelly, sorry. I'm Mary Granland, I am the PTO president at Valley View and also the community member for, that was the, for the current community and children that are currently in school. I just wanted to touch on the fact that we were lucky enough at that community meeting to have two children join us, and I think that out of all of the suggestions, like Board Member Nichols said, I think that the children's suggestion were really the ones that we, we as adults should be listening the most to. Like you said, sir, this is not, this is not necessarily for the adults, it's something that we're doing for the kids, and we have to make it less about what we want and more about what's going to be helpful for them. That's part of the gift of being a parent, is looking to see, you know, how you can help your child grow and those parameters. So I really am excited about this opportunity and engaging the community to work with the kids, to develop something that while they get to have that pie in the sky sort of enthusiastic, what can we do, how can we do it, and we get to be a little bit more realistic about it, but I'm incredibly excited about this opportunity, so.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mariah, appreciate everything you did. Okay, we'll move on to our action items. The first one is the homeless transportation quote. The board will be asked to approve the homeless transportation quote.
Yes, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I, two, well, three weeks ago, whatever it was, our last meeting, I brought you quotes that we had, we had put RFP out for our homeless transportation. We talked about how our homeless transportation needs really haven't diminished since the recession, have actually have more pressure, so we really need to go out and, and because of the dollars that we're spending now on a yearly basis for homeless transportation, we actually had to go do the, through the quoting process. We had been using Ties Watts, I think was wide-area transportation through Ties, but that is no longer, so that's why we went down this road. And this is a quick reminder of where the quotes came in, and we did get four quotes. TCT, Twin City Transportation is our lowest quarter, and this is the, the company that I recommend that we, you know, give a contract to, what we, what we'll do is give them a two-year contract with an option of two more years in the future. We've talked with them for going forward as costs escalate, they have agreed that they will not come back with any type of increase more than what we would receive from the state legislature with a limit at 2%. So we would get actually two, more than 2%, which would be great, they would actually only get the 2. So that's locked in at this point for a four-year period. So it's certainly my recommendation, we go ahead with Twin City Transportation.
Okay, we'll maybe get a motion in a second, then we'll discuss, so if I could get a motion or a discussion. So if it goes up 1%, that's all they'll get.
That's correct.
It's, the cap is it can't go over 2 no matter what.
Right.
But it isn't guaranteed 2 unless we get 2. If we got 2, they get 2.
If, if, you know, if you remember back a few years, we actually had some years where we got 0%, and they would only get the 0%.
So they'll follow ours, okay.
So they'll get what we get to a limit of 2%.
Anybody else, questions? Laura? Sorry, I saw her finger first. Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, I, I understand that we have been actually using them, or is this a brand-new company?
Yeah, this is, this is a company that worked through Ties. Working through Ties, though, we didn't, they, they weren't exclusively just TCT, there were different companies that worked through Watts, so we didn't necessarily get TCT every time that we needed a route fulfilled, but now because of the dollars we're spending, we've got to go to quoting process, so we, we don't have an option to go all over the board with the different contractors. And anyway, they're, they're giving us the best price anyway, so, and we're very happy with the work that they've done for us, they're very, very responsive. I guess, we've just been very happy with them. I mean, they're, they're, I mean, they're in the same caliber as our regular transportation with the buses.
And I understand that the reliability, especially with getting the homeless children to school, that, that they can have a change of residence, so having a very responsive company is, is good, because if it takes a week for, to reroute the trips and everything like that, that's a week of instability.
Yeah, we've been very happy, usually, usually within a day, maybe two at the most, we may be able to change it, and some of these homeless students might change a housing three times in a week, so it is, it is a very difficult piece of our transportation, and they do a very good job at moving fast.
If I remember right, it's, most of this, most of this cost is reimbursed by the state.
That is, yeah, that's correct.
Just want to make sure that.
Right, right now, the reimbursement's at 82%, so it certainly isn't 100%. So you can see the cost there, we're, we're still paying about 20% of that cost out of the general fund. But yes, we do get reimbursed for part of it, which is, which is good news.
And all these students have to start out in the district first, and then they.
Yeah, these, these are students who are our students, and for some reason, they become homeless, they've been, you know, moved out of their home for some particular reason, and they are, don't have a permanent housing arrangement, and by law, they're able to continue to go to school in their school they started the year with, so it gives them some stability in their life when their, rest of it's kind of been thrown, you know, upside down. So by law, they're, they are able to still come here, and that's where our homeless transportation comes in, and that's where we're running around, a lot of these, you know, one or two students in a vehicle, and so it makes it, makes it expensive. We're a bus unit, and we're putting in 50 at a time, so we're running all over, you know, to the north, south, east, and west, they, they don't all go one place when there's an issue for their families. But TCT has been very responsive and to getting our children where they need to be.
So are they, are they, you'd say they're efficient in terms of their routes and so forth, especially like giving?
Yeah, they're, they're very efficient. I mean, they, they work with our transportation manager in their routing, but lots of times they'll have suggestions that make it more efficient than even what we've done, so we're very happy with that, and they always offer that up, so we're not paying more than we have to.
Great, and how is this compared to what we're paying now for?
Actually, the, the cost with TCT, this is actually going to be less than we paid, because we paid administrative fee with Ties. I think it was actually pretty high, it's close to 7 or 8%. So this is actually, we'll spend less money in our homeless now with, going directly with TCT.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, here, no more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, next up is a resolution for a special election. The board will be asked to approve a special election to fill a vacancy, and there's going to be a resolution that has to be read, and Don is going to be doing the, presenting the information, but if we could, start with a motion in a second to get it on the table.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
And...
Thirty-four.
Okay, I'll read the resolution, and then we'll move forward, if that's okay. A resolution declaring a vacancy in the office of the school board, of school board member and calling for a special election to fill a vacancy, whereas school board member Lori Meyer has filed a written resignation with the board effective July 23, 2015, whereas pursuant to MS 123B.095, a vacancy in the office of school board member must be filled at a special election to be held, not less than 120 days following the date the vacancy is declared, but no later than 12 weeks prior to the date of the next regularly scheduled primary election. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 as follows. Effective July 24, 2015, a vacancy exists in the office of school board member. The district shall proceed to select a successor to fill the vacancy by special election to be held according to the following schedule. A special primary December 1, 2015, and a special election January 26, 2016. Be it further resolved that the school board of Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 directs the clerk to make all necessary preparations for the election required by Minnesota statute, rule, and administrative policy of the district. Okay. So in essence, this is where, it's a resolution declaring the vacancy so that we can move forward with the election. Does anybody have any questions for Don, or do you have anything in particular you want to present to us?
I was just going to say a few things if I could, Mr. Chair and board members. As I said in my superintendent's report, we have worked with the state and the county because this is a brand-new law, and it went into effect July 1, and everybody's trying to be as transparent as they can with us, but they're figuring it out as they go as well, and that I, by that I mean the election bureaus. And so we have talked to state, county, MSBA, and our school district attorney, and it was thought best that because we, there's no general elections in our area at the time, that we work collaboratively with the county and work with them to help us hold the election, and so that we can, and you'll, you'll have another resolution about that as well, so that we can cut costs, make sure that we have everything that we need, and we have the appropriate timeline. So in the board packet, you see that with the resolution comes the timeline of events, and some of the questions that I get the most is really when is the candidate filing period? And so if you pass this resolution, Tuesday, September 8 would be the first day of filing, and Tuesday, September 22 would be the last day of filing. A second question that I get a lot, and so does Don, is how many does it take to have a primary? And it's, would be, have to be, it would have to be three. So in, the special primary election would be Tuesday, December 1, and that's why it's in the resolution. And then the special election would be January 26. The next question I get is, well, if we're holding the, the election in January, why can't we just appoint? And it's because it goes back to the date of the actual acceptance of the resignation of the, of the board member, so that would go back to July. So that is why. And we'll talk more about costs in the next resolution, but this outlines it, and I also wanted to note that Don and I put the entire thing in your packet, so you could see all the work that is generated by this, and all the things that have to go on between now and the January 26 election.
Any questions?
I actually do have one. If, if only two candidates file, does that move the election date, or does the election date with this resolution fall on January 26 regardless?
We asked the county, and it does stay as it is.
Does it save the school money if only two people run compared to three? If it goes to a primary, does that, does the cost go up?
The cost would go up.
Our, our cost would go, would not, yeah, we would not have to pay for the judges for the primary, election officials, and other, other costs involved in that.
So just to clarify, if there, if there are three or more candidates, we would have to have a primary?
That's right.
Okay.
But for the clarification, if there's only two, we still don't have the special election until January?
That's right.
Okay.
My understanding is that this is, this timeline is as soon as we possibly can have the election after the, according to the law?
We've worked with the county on this, and they've had their, their staff look at it, and this is their projected, and since they do it for their day job and we don't, we're working, we're taking the county's word on that. I also think that Minnesota School Boards Association is thinking that some of the nuances in the law probably need to be clarified with 120 days and, and things like that, and so really, they'll be looking at this and another election in the state as kind of test cases to see how this all happens. And so we don't have definitive answers and everything because there are gray areas in the law, but those are out of our control, and as a board, these are our procedures.
So it's our best guess of what the law means?
Absolutely. And I want to say the state election bureau, and the Anoka County Election Bureau, and MSBA attorney, and our own school district attorney, so it's a very educated guess.
Anybody else? Don, would you do a roll call, please?
Nichols?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landweir?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Next up would be the resolution to combine precincts for special election. Again, we'll get it on the table, I'll read the resolution, and then have those talk about the cost and things like that. So if I could get a motion to move it forward?
You're moved.
Second.
Laura, thank you. And "Resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide, county, or municipal election. Be it resolved by School Board of Independent School District 13, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot 111, the precincts and polling places for school districts elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The Board hereby confirms, confirms those precincts and polling places so, so established by those municipalities. And number two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot 111, the Board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school elections not held on the day of a statewide, county, or municipal election. Combined polling places are hereby established to serve the precincts specified for all school district, special and general elections not held on the same day as statewide, county, or municipal elections as listed below. Combination name would be Independent School District 13, Poll One, Valley View Elementary, 849th. And that would be comprised of the city precincts of Columbia Heights Precinct 1, Columbia Heights Precinct 2, Columbia Heights Precinct 7, Columbia Heights Precinct 8, Fridley. Would be W1, Precinct 4, Fridley, W3, P4, and Hilltop, P1. And then the other site, Independent School District 13, Precinct 2 would be Highland Elementary, 1549th Avenue. And that would cover Columbia Heights Precinct 3, Columbia Heights Precinct 4, Columbia Heights Precinct 5, Columbia Heights Precinct 6, Fridley, W2, P3, Fridley, W2, P4. Number three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A point 09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Number four, the clerk is directed to prepare a map illustrating the boundaries of each combined precinct, to post the map of the combined precincts in the administrative offices of the school district, and to file a copy of the map and a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Number five, as required by Minnesota Statute Section 204B point 16 subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to all registered voters in the school district whose school district polling place locations have been changed. The notice must be a non-affordable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it would, will apply. Go over why we're talking about collapsing the precincts.
You can start.
The Columbia Heights Public Schools does have a resolution on file at Anoka County from 1996. The problem with the resolution was to collapse the polling places. The resolution, one of the sites is NEI, which is no longer existing. So we had to pick a new site. So we've decided to use our, our buildings that would save us cost by using our own facilities. And we somewhat changed a little bit of the, what, who's voting where to kind of split it down, Highway 65. So if you're in the west, you're pretty much in the west. You go to Valley View, and if you're on the east, you go to Highland. So the map, there is a map that was prepared, and it will be posted. There is a few exceptions in the Fridley precincts.
Billy, I want to talk a little bit about the background of what?
Yeah, I think, you know, when we, when we talk about collapsing, I mean, the biggest driver, at least in my eyes, always is cost. And we, we put a little spreadsheet in your packet. You can see that with only two precincts, that our, our regular cost is going to run around $10,000, $10,500 for a general election with two precincts. But of course, we keep at the 13 precincts, which we have right now. You can see that pushes that cost up to about $44,000, mainly because there's just a lot of judges have to be hired because we have to have eight judges in every single precinct. And then, of course, we, we also included some costs there. If a primary is needed, that those costs actually do go up. We're at $4,000 for a two precinct primary election, and another $20,000 for a 13 precinct primary election. So you can see that we certainly, our recommendation is to collapse those precincts to two for these very small elections, for our own general election.
So you do see the grand total there, Bill, of being one?
Yeah, if we need a...
We save about, about $50,000.
Yeah. Yeah, but by collapsing it, we save about $50,000 if we have a primary with it. So that's a considerable amount of money.
Just for clarification for the audience, there's generally, in a normal election, there's 13 precincts.
Correct.
And that's an option we have would be to open all 13 precincts. And the number, the $63,710 would be if we opened all 13 precincts and had a primary. And the suggestion of the recommendation in the resolution is asking that we go down to two. And that's, the total for two precincts would be $14,519. So as you mentioned, almost $50,000 difference. And is this something that, it, it's been done before? It's not like this is something that would be unusual?
Correct. Precedent was that, in a special election in '96, I believe.
Okay. Right. Questions or comments from anybody else? I just want to make sure that was clear.
What was the other place besides NEI in '96?
Valley View.
Valley View? And those were both on the west side?
Correct. We're not sure why.
Anyone else?
My, my only concern with this is that, that voters know where to go. And what's the plan for that? Is there a plan?
It's required that we do send a card to each registered voter in our district. They will receive a card, I believe it's four or five weeks before the primary, if that occurs. Otherwise, it'll be for the general election. And that will tell them where the polling places. We also will be posting this, and I'm sure it'll be on our website.
25 days.
25 days, okay.
Laura?
I was just wondering if, if maybe, since it's going to be, you know, everything's going to be right off of Central going either way, if we could even have maybe a sign that says precinct this, this way, precinct that, that way.
We, we will be posting on the, on, if you voted in other precincts, say Merchant Hall or something, we will be posting on the doors of those buildings where they should be voting that day.
Okay, okay.
That'll be something that'll be done also.
Anyone else have any questions?
Okay. I guess just a comment. The reason we're having, needing to have a special election is because there's more than one year left in the term that's vacant. So I don't know if that got out, but I want to make sure that people know that.
No, didn't, and that's a good point. It's, it's a law change July 1st where previously we would have been able to appoint, but the timeframe of how long the seat is vacant changed. So it's forced us to incur the cost of doing a special election. So thanks for bringing that up. That's a good point. Anyone else?
Also about, like, cutting down the cost of, I think a big reason for this is because we, you know, we don't want it to impact the kids and the money that, you know, it's affecting. So I think that's important for people to know.
Historically, there's also a low voter turnout in a special election.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm, I'm happy with the notice requirements that, that we will be undertaking. I think people will understand where to go.
Hearing nothing else, would you do a roll call, please, Don?
Nichols?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landweir?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the National School Board Association Annual Conference. The Board, get to that page. "Per Policy 214, out-of-state travel by School Board Members. We are asking for prior approval up to two School Board Members to attend, to attend the National School Board Association Annual Conference in Boston in April 2016. The expectations are already reflected in the current School Board budget and the current rotation right now. The person that would have the first opportunity to be a member, Nichols. A new member that would be elected, and then would move forward from there depending upon whether one of those people chose to or not to attend." So if we could, to get a chance to talk about it, could you get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
And Laura?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. Point of note, point of note, at one time, we actually had it on our budget where all six could go. It was a couple, three years ago, where there's discussion and decision to limit it to, up to two people. So that's where this is coming from. And then our policy requires that we approve the travel, so.
Just to have a comment, I'm, you know, as a person who's gone to these conferences, I think they're very worthwhile, and it's a great way to see what the best practices are around the country. And, you know, I've said this before, but that requires whoever goes to give a good report back to us, and I believe that's in our policy. So for, at least for me, the more robust the report that can be given, the better because then we all benefit from, from that knowledge. And part of our, part of our, I think, goals as a district is to follow best practices and to implement them and, and keep them, keep us cutting edge. And that's what we can do through this conference. One of the ways, at least.
Well? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up would be the election of a School Board Clerk as a result of the resignation by Lori. She was the clerk for us, so we're going to, and just for clarification, so you know that we just need a motion, you don't need a second, but, so I'm going to make a motion to elect a new clerk and open it for nominations. And I actually will start with the nomination of Member Lewis. And then are there any other nominations?
I mean, she's the treasurer.
Can you do both? I would have to move it then.
I would nominate Member Palmer.
You're not anything that's going to interfere?
I'm not anything right now.
Okay. I'll actually remove my nomination for...
It's just, it's just us. We were kind of flipping a coin. It was like, who do you think?
All right. Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Nobody likes me. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay. When one person's nominated, I'm going to make a motion that we cast a unanimous ballot since we only have one nomination.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don will have things for you to sign tonight, I'm sure.
Your experience too, right?
Huh? I am experienced, yes. Just for a couple of months.
Board topics. Anybody have anything for board topics this evening?
I made a mistake. The, the new WeMap director we're considering is Dr. Kimberly Matier. I misspoke about her last name, so. And she's from Minneapolis, former curriculum administrator.
We have a work session coming up, like, next week, so I was just wondering if we could bring up maybe the topic of like soft landings inside our own school district, you know, just a topic. I'll probably go more in detail, talking to Kathy or, you know, you maybe later on, so. But just about how we do things, you know, like with a soft landing, just an idea, if we could talk about that during our work session. It's a, if we change like a program, say like we have busing at Highland, you know, because we have the pre-K at Highland, and now it's moving to Valley View and stuff. But parents, I've heard from a few parents, like three, that the busing goes from Highland to the, for the Valley View boundaries last year. But now, since Valley View's got the pre-K, boundaries are set like we originally have them. And I think a lot of people don't know that and are kind of like uninformed, so just a good discussion to talk about on the work session.
So it's the pre-K busing?
Pre-K busing, yeah.
Got it.
That's all.
Okay. The soft landing piece was confusing me.
Yeah. Good.
Okay.
That's fine.
Any other board topics?
Well, actually, it was something I'd forgotten to mention in the update, is that we did not vote on the Capital View project. I think at our August, our August meeting, that we would be looking at doing that in the near future.
Any other board topics?
You know, may I say one thing?
Absolutely.
And that is Ted and I talked prior to the meeting that the superintendent representative on the WeMap Board has tendered his resignation in July, and I will be the superintendent rep on the WeMap Board starting in September. I just would like the Board to know that.
Congrats.
Thank you. It's a rotation, but I'll take it.
Any other board topics? Hearing none.
Show your thumb or while you can.
Yeah, no kidding. Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:29.